Well, it is six oh one and we're calling this meeting to order of the Sunnyside Industrial Development Corporation's special meeting. It's our annual meeting to elect officers and take any information that we may may need or have. So first thing our first thing that we need to do tonight is perhaps introduce the officers again because it's been a year and we've not met. And I forgot that I'm the president, Julia Hart, and Mr. Grubinoff, will you introduce yourself?
I'm an officer.
Yes, you are. You're vice president.
Oh, I'm sorry. Jim Grubinoff from Forta Sunset.
Yes, and then.
Martin Beeler, secretary.
All right. That just helps us to it's been a long year. Since we didn't get to do anything, maybe this coming year we'll find some fun stuff to do. And anyway, it's the city clerk with mind do a roll call for us, please.
Councilor Ripley.
Here.
Councilor Beeler.
Here.
Councilor Farmer.
Here.
Councilor Hart.
Here.
Deputy Mayor Rissucci.
Here.
Councilor Hicks. Mayor Boersma.
Here.
Commissioner Martin.
Here.
Commissioner Grubinoff.
Here.
Commissioner Gilbert.
Thank you. All right. So the thing on our active number active agenda this evening is the approval of the minutes of the January tenth two twenty twenty-two special meeting. And those were distributed via email. Everyone had an opportunity to check those out. There's and if they have, what is the desire of the corporation?
Move to approve. I'll second.
Motion made by Mr. Beeler, seconded by Mr. Boersma. To approve the ministers presented. Any debate? Hearing none. City clerk, would you please again do the roll call for the vote?
Commissioner Nora.
Yes.
Farmer.
Yes.
Rissucci.
Yes.
Ripley.
Yes.
Beeler.
Yes.
Martin.
Yes.
Grubinoff.
Yes.
Thank you. And the primary reason for us being here this evening is the election of officers for twenty twenty-three. So the first nominations are now open for president.
I nominate Martin Beeler for president.
Second.
Um, but I'm the judge, Jim. Okay, are there any other nominations?
Move that with closed nominations.
There being no further nominate nominations. Where did the where did the motion come from? Oh, it was Jim, wasn't it? Ma back here. Okay. Um, so no for the drop nominate nominations. The nominations are now closed. I will start the roll call vote. Um, actually, if Jackie, if you could do that, that would be.
Boersma.
Yes.
Farmer.
Yes.
Hart.
Yes.
Rissucci.
Yes.
Ripley.
Yes.
Beeler.
Yes.
Martin.
Yes.
Grubinoff.
Yes.
Thank you.
Thank you. And sir, Mr. Beeler, you are now the president. Would you like to take over the rest of the nomination?
I certainly will.
There, if you would, please. Thank you.
Um, next up is the vice president signing for nominees.
I nominate Arlo Martin.
Who?
Arlo Martin.
Arlo Martin.
General Mar, by me.
The other nomination, or no, second, I'm Vicky. The other nomination.
Call for the motion. Call for the nominations to be closed.
Nominations will be closed. All right, now we'll have a vote on this and we'll just do it the old fashioned way. All those with yes, say yes.
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 All those no, say no. And carries. Last thing we need is a secretary. Nominations for secretary.
I nominate Vicky Ripley.
I have a second.
I'll second.
We have a first and a second. Any other nominees for secretary? Hearing none, we'll bring this to a vote. All those in favor, say aye.
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 Those opposed, say nay. Motion carries. You are the secretary.
Where's my book?
Is there anything else in front of the court that we need to discuss?
Move to adjourn.
Second.
Okay, it is at six oh seven and the meeting is adjourned.
Well, we got that done. Good.
Congratulations, everyone.
Congratulations. Good job. Good job.
Anywhere Dr. King's teachings can't continue to guide and inspire us in addressing challenges in our communities. And the King Holiday of Service Act enacted in nineteen ninety-four designated the King Holiday as a national day of volunteer service. And whereas since nineteen ninety-four, millions of Americans have been inspired by the life and work of Dr. Martin Luther King Jr. to serve their neighbors and communities on the King Holiday. And serving on the King Holiday is an appropriate way to honor Dr. King, meet local and national needs, bring our citizens together, and strengthen our communities and nation. And whereas the King Holiday, the King Day of Service is the only federal holiday commemorated as a national day of service and offers an opportunity for Americans to get back to their communities on the holiday and make an ongoing commitment to service throughout the year. And whereas these of us can and must contribute to making our communities better, the city of Sunnyside is actively involved in promoting and preserving racial equality and peaceful community and accessible opportunity by all citizens. And now therefore, I deem Boersma mayor of the city of Sunnyside, Washington, by virtue of the authority vested in me by the laws of the state of Washington and on behalf of the city council, do hereby proclaim January sixteen, two thousand twenty-three, as Martin Luther King Jr. Day in the city of Sunnyside. In case upon the pony whereof, I have here on two set my hand and cause the seal of the city of Sunnyside to be affixed, done at the city of Sunnyside on this ninth day of January in the year two thousand twenty-three. All right. And the second thing, I understand that Scott Wagner is here. Could you please come forward, sir? And while he's coming forward, I'd like to just enough why he's coming forward. Scott's father, Arlo, served on the Sunnyside City Fire Department as a volunteer and as a paid firefighter for about forty-seven, it's close to fifty years, forty-seven years, is that correct? And he served in a lot of capacities, well known in our city. And Mr. Wagner, I can understand having gone through it myself, the pain and the loss that you're feeling at this time. Um, as council, we wish to express our condolences. This is a very difficult time. One of the things that I've noticed over the last year is Mayor of Sunnyside is that we are sometimes slow to recognize those in our community who serve and give such a huge part of their lives to our community. And we want to express our gratitude to for your father's work, to you and your family, the sacrifice that you all had to go through because I sure he was called out for emergencies many times throughout your life. And so we wish to recognize this evening the service of Arlo Wagner to the city of Sunnyside and express our gratitude as a city council and the city to him for his service. And in doing that, I would like to award you this coin of the mayor of the city of Sunnyside. And I'll come down.
He was a great guy. He was always so much fun with his fire prevention programs, you know, and he worked, all those photographs he took at the fires and everything, he ended up giving those to the Sunnyside son and did all the photo work on those for years and years and years and for the news, the daily as well. So thank you. Thank you for all your service there.
Very welcome. I'm glad I was able to share my father with the city, especially as many years as he has served in this community. Would be very proud to accept this and I'm glad to accept it for the.
I've known your your father for a very long time.
Yes, sir.
Thank you very much. I really appreciate it. Really appreciate it.
Yeah, yeah, thank you.
Well, thank you.
Many, um, Bobby.
Yes, he did.
And saved me many times from people that are trying to get me. I loved him so much.
The thing, a small little community like this, everybody knows each other. A lot of people here have a lot of history and a lot go a long ways. And they appreciate everybody's admiration of him in that because it makes makes things a little bit easier. It really does. Doesn't take the pain away, but it makes it a lot easier for you to have the city's support and out of the community. I really appreciate the city of Sunnyside for the honor of my father being able to serve for as many years as he did, both as a volunteer and as a career person within the department. Thank you very much.
Don't always understand how rich a community is with the volunteers and people who serve in that community. So it's truly a blessing to have individuals like Mr. Wagner serving in this community. So we wish to continue to recognize them and do that in a timely manner. All right, going on the agenda. First item, public comments. Do we have anyone here this evening wishing to give a public comment? So please approach the microphone, state your name and city of residence, and then you'll have three minutes to make your comments. Motion carries this evening. Very well, moving on. Consent agenda. The consent agenda consists of the following. Payroll vouchers. Approve payroll vouchers number one one nine two zero four through one one nine two one five and wire transfers as listed for four hundred seventy-four thousand, three hundred eight dollars and forty-three cents for the period ending on December ninth, two thousand twenty-three. Approve payroll voucher numbers one one nine two one six through one one nine two two zero and wire transfers as listed for four hundred seventy-nine thousand, nine hundred forty-seven dollars and ninety-four cents for the period ending on December three, two thousand twenty, I'm sorry, December twenty, three, two thousand twenty-two. Claim vouchers. Approve claim voucher numbers one zero five one six two through one zero five one eight five and wire transfers as listed for two hundred seventy-five thousand, eight hundred eighty-nine dollars and twenty-two cents for the period ending on December fourteen, two thousand twenty-two. Approve claim voucher numbers one zero five one eight six through one zero five two six three and wire transfers as listed for one hundred forty-eight thousand, nine hundred ninety-five dollars and thirty cents for the period ending on December twenty-one, two thousand twenty-two. And approved claim voucher numbers one zero five two six four through one zero five three zero six and wire transfers as listed for three hundred fifty-eight thousand, five hundred ninety-three dollars and thirty-six cents for the period ending on December twenty-eight, two thousand twenty-two. Council members, are there any items that you wish to pull from the consent agenda?
No, but I would like to make note of the, I think it's a typo here in item number one under A there for the period ending December ninth, twenty twenty-three. Have we hit December ninth, twenty twenty-three already? And I missed it.
I'm assuming that, clerk, that it's twenty twenty-two?
Thank you. I figured it was too, but.
Thank you, Ms. Hart, for noticing that. Okay, hearing no, that nobody wants to tell you. What is the desire of council on this item?
Move to approve.
Second.
Motion by Mr. Beeler, second by Deputy Mayor Rissucci. Any debate on this item? Hearing none, since all of council was present, we're going to go in the old fashioned way and we're just going to do it by voice, vote. So all in favor of approving the consent agenda, please signify by saying aye. Aye. All opposed, no. I also vote aye. Motion carries. And it has come to my attention that I forgot to do the roll call and for the record, all of council was present this evening and pretty much all of the department is as well. First meeting of the year, that gets to be a little bit off my set for a second. Active agenda. Two thousand twenty-two Yakima County Multi Jurisdictional Hazard Mitigation Plan. Consider approving a resolution adopting a two thousand twenty-two Yakima County Multi Jurisdictional Hazard Mitigation Plan. Now, city manager.
I'll turn this over to Chief Management to report.
Mayor, council members, a happy new year. Um, this is some sort of housekeeping. Every jurisdiction or every agency in the in the county is part of a hazard, if you're supposed to emergency management, rather, is part of the comprehensive emergency management. There's four components to that, preparedness, response, mitigation. Every five years, that plan or portion of that plan is actually updated as a requirement by two months in Homeland Security so that we can national response, more requirements. Initially, this plan has to be updated and sent on file on a timely matter so that it opens the county and the jurisdiction up to our jurisdiction, so we actually apply for the CFT grant. So they, last year in two thousand twenty-two, the county hired an agency to fix the plan. Lot more comprehensive than it was. And so in its draft form, they extended off to the state. Uh, one thing that's different that's not that we added was that I would have to get the council to adopt the international wildland urban interface. The state recently adopted. We're talking to Mr. Martin. The city's ordinance already says that they adopt all state codes.
Council members, any questions or comments?
I was just surprised at how much it did cover. I mean, I started reading it, reading it and thought about a dam. I've got to deal with here. We have dams up here. I'm thinking the Columbia itself. It was interesting reading. Long read though.
I think they did a really good job on it this year. It was before they, they did a pretty good job on it in the past as well. It was just bringing outside eyes in. For those council members that are interested in learning more about this process, I got to put one together for the county when I was on the emergency management board. So if you're interested, you should reach out to the county commissioners to see if you get appointed to that board. Because it'll let you go through that whole process. You even get to do the homeland security training and all of that stuff and tabletop exercises. I've done all kinds of different tabletop exercises over the last nineteen years. So if you're interested in that kind of stuff, reach out to Landon Lindy and see if you can't get appointed. These experiences are valuable and helpful. You'll find that they're helpful in different areas than what you expect. So this kind of knowledge is a great background knowledge.
Any other discussions, comments, questions? All right, what is the desire of council on this item?
Move to approve.
I'll second.
Hicks.
Yep, Mr. Hicks.
All right, motion by Councilor Hart, seconded by Councilor Hicks to approve a resolution adopting a two thousand twenty-two Yakima County Multi Jurisdictional Hazards Mitigation Plan. Debate on this item.
No debate, Mr. Mayor. Just want to make comment to the chief that this is great. I'm glad they're bringing this forward to us now.
I agree. Right, if there's no further debate, then all those in favor of approving this motion, please signify by saying aye. Aye. Opposed, no. If you vote aye, motion carries. Item B, SMC two dot zero two dot zero two zero, schedule of fees and charges update. Consider adopting an ordinance updated to section two dot zero two dot zero two zero of the Sunnyside Municipal Code Schedule of Fees and Charges. That is city manager.
I'm going to pass this over to Admin Justice Director. I want to let you know that for eight years, it's been my goal to try to get all of our fees in one place. And she did some really heavy, heavy lifting to move as many things as we could into this section that's easy for our citizens to find out what things cost. So I wanted to give my hat off to her. Thank you, Mayor and City Manager. There are still more to move over to the hopefully at some point in the near future, we will have them all listed in one place. This sentence that you have before you is to update the fee schedule for year twenty twenty-three. Um, per the municipal code, the city manager is authorized to increase all of these fees on an annual basis up to six percent. And based on inflation this year, she elected to go with a five percent increase. Um, there are some fees that were not subject to that, including the building apartment. We just had those updated last year and Trevor is working on a more comprehensive update of those fees. Um, but then in addition, we did finish the garbage fees, which as you'll recall, we changed the billing sort of the function for how we how we come up with those rates um, in October. And so we've updated those fees in the schedule and updated the water and sewer equity fees and also updated some uh, city uh, facility rental fees. Otherwise, it's pretty much straight across by.
Council members, questions or comments for Ms. Warner? Now, what's the desire of council on this item?
Move to approve.
Second.
Okay, motion by Councilor Ripley, seconded by Councilor Hicks to adopt an ordinance updating section two dot zero two dot zero two zero of the Sunnyside Municipal Code Schedule of Fees and Charges. Debate on this item? Hearing none. All those in favor of this motion, please signify by saying aye. Aye. Opposed, no. Vote aye. Motion carries. All right. Next comes our selection for um, commissions, council committees. So do you have a complete list, Madam Clerk, on this past year? Am I missing the current ones on the YBCO? Five solid waste and.
Please, um, um, the cog is Ms. Ripley and myself. Um, I think I'm the delegate and she's the alternate.
That is correct. That's what we we had this year, yes, in twenty-two. Yeah.
Yeah, and it's probably like I called you today, it was probably a little too late. Okay, we need to fill these positions. It doesn't mean that if you're filling that position now, would you continue that you cannot? Um, there's no statute, no limitations on serving that I know of. Nobody's informed me of it yet anyway. So um, if you're currently serving that position and enjoy it, you're certainly welcome to continue to do that. So these are countywide positions, the first up to letter F. So I guess I'll ask the person still serving, would you wish to continue, Ms. Hart?
Yes, please.
Okay. Is there any objection of Ms. Hart serving as the delegate? And we will put Ms. Hart, I hope her to continue for another year. Thank you for that, Ms. Ripley. Are you interested in continuing your alternate position?
Yes.
Okay. Any objection of Ms. Ripley serving? All right, thank you. And Yakima Valley Conference of Governments, YBCO Executive Committee selection of representative to the YBCO Executive Committee, the representative currently is.
I'd love to continue to say, um, this is my thirteenth year as chairman of the cog. So I'll get to finish out the fourteen years on the cog.
Is there any objection to Mr. Rissucci continuing his position as chair?
Rather than leaving him at thirteenth, yeah, it's moving to fourteenth.
I really didn't want to add that thirteen years. Thank you so much. Not being overly superstitious, that didn't cross my mind, but um, I have attended YBCO meetings, both in person and virtually, and I think Mr. Rissucci has done an excellent job. And his knowledge of what the cog is all about is far greater than anyone else in the valley. I think as long as we can keep you on that position, I'd love to see you there. So thank you for that. Thank you, council. All right, driving rural Yakima Valley economy, drive selection, primary and alternate. Who's our current? Mr. Beeler.
Would you still like to continue?
Would you like to? Is there any objection to Mr. Beeler continuing? Either you are therefore appointed to continue.
There's a primary and.
I believe I heard, yes, yes, you've, Ms. Ripley, you are the alternate? Did you forget that?
Yes. Last year at this time, it was kind of overwhelming.
I'll bet it was.
Well, in drive, I'm an ex officio member as a state transportation commissioner, so I serve on drive and transaction. And they're doing combined meetings now with both boards and it's virtual. So it shouldn't be too much of a problem. It's in the afternoon, couple of hours and usually it's.
So I'll ask you, are you interested in continuing in that alternate position?
Yes.
Okay, any objection to Ms. Ripley continuing? Ms. Ripley, you. And section A F, I'm sorry, Yakima County Solid Waste Advisory Group, our representative is not been called for a meeting in that at all.
Well, Mr. Mayor, since you are going to represent us again, I really wish you would sit down with the county commissioners and figure out what's going on. Landfills closing and everything else, we need to know what's going on.
So I have talked to the commissioners about that, just not because I was on that committee, but because I was curious. So I can give a report on that later on in this meeting if you'd like.
I would, actually.
Yes, please.
I'm not opposed to continuing. They don't mean an awful lot. Um, so I, if there's no objection, I'll continue in that position.
Make it so.
Our track reference.
At least one, you gotta have one.
All right, Sunnyside United Unidos. Ripley, have you been attending the meetings?
Mm-hmm.
Okay, would you like to continue?
Mm-hmm.
Any objection to Ms. Ripley continuing in that position? You are hereby appointed to continue. I served in that position for seven years and enjoyed it. It's just that my schedule and their schedule do not work well together. All right, so under item H, Board of Commissions from the city of Sunnyside, um, other than LTAC, they, public safety met twice.
I scrolled down to that page yet.
There we are. So LTAC, you guys met, what, three, four times?
Yes.
Or are you still meeting every month?
Um, yes, we are trying to because we're trying to do something with our policies and procedures and some changes for our guidelines uh, for um, how we operate at at Sunnyside LTAC. Um, could, so we, I would like to continue in that position.
Well, I was going to say, if you're midstreaming that, I would like you to continue on that because you've already started the process and you're familiar with how things have been going. You're somebody who you must bring them up to speed.
I know, I know. And we have a pretty good decent board of of advisors right now and I really feel like we we're right in the middle of it. So we're making progress.
Okay, is there any objection to Ms. Hart continuing in that position? Objection, either Ms. Hart, you are there.
Thank you.
Okay, the arts commission is Mr. Rissucci.
Happy to continue to serve, Mr. Mayor.
Okay. Objection, Mr. Rissucci continuing in that position? Desire to be. Parks and Recreation. Under on that on my list. Don't have council member in Parks and Rec. Do we have somebody who would like to serve in Parks?
If if no one else would, I would like to to serve on that committee.
Would you like to?
Yeah.
Okay. Any objection? I think we're putting together, I think, potentially a really good um, leaders members who want to serve on that.
Right.
And airports, current airport person is.
It's me. We're working on a new layout with the FAA and I'd like to continue.
All right, any objection? Either you may continue. It is interesting, isn't it? You find out, once you get appointed to these committees, you start working on the process, how much you enjoy it and how much you want to see it through the end. I remember when we were bringing Ostrom's in and I had to be the president of the FDIC and I did not want that to go into the next term and me miss out on the end of that project. So yeah, it becomes important to you. All right, moving on then to subcommittees. I think most of our subcommittees, other than public safety, did not meet this year. Is that correct? All right, so Mr. Rissucci and I have had a conversation and I'm sure you all know that as part of his, that his, that as part of his being part of the YBCO, he's been very involved in the county crime lab process and all the steps that's gone through that. And he has agreed to switch with me and serve on our subcommittee on public safety and I'm going to move to public works. I'm going to move to public works. But for the rest of it, since we haven't met, I would like to keep us all in the same subcommittees, if that's okay. And I'd like to encourage us to meet at least once this year for each of those. There's several of them that probably should meet more often. Public safety should probably meet more often. We were going to, and that one was on me. I didn't get the meeting called and set up, and I apologize for that.
Well, would say, Mr. Mayor, the community development just started meeting last year, and we have been meeting regularly, and I think we have a meeting tomorrow.
Right, but this is council subcommittee and committee.
Yeah, that's a different one?
It is, yes. There's the one of the community members in it, and there's one of the three members of council. And those three are Mrs. Deputy Mayor, Counsel Hart, and Counsel Ripley.
Then we should meet.
But to be honest, we hadn't met because we were kind of waiting for this other committee to meet and see what they drove. You know, when we created the subcommittee, we didn't have this other committee. So it might be that, you know, when we sit down with rules this year, we actually look at getting rid of that committee if it's duplication of efforts.
Yeah, we'll have to look into that. And it well may be, so, thank you.
Yeah, we want to be sending one message out. All right, any other comments or questions on our committee assignments?
The rules committee, subcommittee?
Rules, subcommittee, that was myself, Deputy Mayor, and Counsel Farmer.
Yeah.
The code requires the mayor and the deputy mayor to serve on rules and one other member of council. I have a problem with Mike standing if he wants to close my. Former mayor, he probably knows the rules.
All right, continuing, item five, items from council members, mayor's appointments for boards and commissions. I don't have any appointments to announce, but I have spoken to applicants and people interested in serving on our parks and rec, and I have received an affirmative comment from everybody I've spoken with. And so we will be bringing some names before you this next meeting, not tonight, but on the.
I have two names for the salary commission, Mr. Mayor.
And so if you propose names to me, yeah.
I mean, they haven't met in ten years. Probably time for them to meet.
Did like. So, all right, so there will be some movement on that, and I will try to be a little bit more quick on that than I was in the previous point. Council request status reports. Pick that up, I'll. I'll hold the city manager for a couple minutes.
Okay, so upon my return after being out sick in December, we had a meeting last Tuesday with our leadership team, and I brought this forward to them and have tasked them to get this list cleaned up, finished up, and our goal is to try to have everything done in six months. One item that we know is going to probably take longer will be the water tower project, where that one is in the process is, there's another city, is it Pasco? City of Pasco, it has recently done theirs, and so we're going to feedback on their RFE and really start, we want to probably start getting this out in February, March, so if we can get ahead of the path and when the weather's good. We are looking at a cost of anywhere between thirty and fifty thousand dollars. So this will be something that will have to be prioritized amendment. We do still have some hard money available, so we could possibly use that for our one-time purchase, but we will bring that forward to council when we retrieve the process. I wanted you to note that the one that is going to be kind of on here a little longer, but we are, we are going to be working on this, and I have tasked this department to get these moving, moving in a direction off of this report.
All right. Being said, does any council member have an item that they would like to add to the request status report?
Maybe getting that fence on First Avenue by Valley View there, get it repainted, the one that has all the graffiti on it, it's a, the tan vinyl fence.
I believe that's a private fence, so we wouldn't be able to do it.
Oh, really?
I, is that, go ahead, Shane.
It is our fence, we just need to re-slat it, because it's vinyl.
Uh-huh.
It just doesn't paint.
Okay.
We need to get another couple of models to slat this one, re-slat it. Actually, it is our fence, we put it up in the first grade project. The people that live adjacent to that, that's backyard, there's another fence. So they chose to keep their fences, we put up the.
Okay, so I have one, and I don't know if it would best be under the, something that's already on there or not, but I've been, I'm sure most of us have taken a look at that Facebook page, WhatsApp, Sunnyside, at one time or another. I don't comment on Facebook pages, but I do try to keep up on what's going on. And one thing that I've noticed is the sheer number of dogs wandering around Sunnyside, and it's perimeter, there's dogs all over the place. And I don't know if it's because, and I know by my house, there are some people who turn their dogs loose at a prescribed time every day. There are a pair of dogs who walk, run down my street eastbound towards downtown every single morning at a certain time of day. On the corner of Grandview Avenue and Swan Road, there is a very large white dog, it looks like a white German shepherd, that literally chased my vehicle. Had I been walking or riding a bicycle, I could have been, could have been painful. But I'm hearing about dogs all over the place. I'm also hearing about dogs that bark all night. There was a post on there about a dog confined near the hospital that barked all night, was driving the neighbors crazy. And the question was, there's somebody posted as a response, and I'll call the police, would they even respond? Do we have a mechanism in place to take care of these stray dogs and these incessant barking dogs that are apparently all over town? I know you've mentioned in the past, Chief, that we notify the police, they'll put it on the log for the, the dog catcher to take care of or make some sort of connection with people. Is there a way we can make that more effective or give it more teeth so that we can get the problem solved?
Can look into that, but I know that we would usually go contact somebody, we'd complain at night, ask them to take their dog inside or something to that. Refer to animal control. She's our animal control part-time, and she splits her time with Grandview, and I'll tell you, quite often, her truck's full. And she'll tell her, hey, we've got these loose dogs, and she'll say, my truck's full, I've got to run the Yakima replacement pool. I know that she's pretty overworked, I guess I would say.
And are we still contracted to the Humane Society of Yakima?
Correct, and she spends about half her time here, and I would say probably half of that time she's out and about, and about half of that time she's. Works for, she's just going to court.
Does any managers, is there a way we can come up with some sort of strategy to improve that service just a little bit? I know it's going to cost more money to be able to do that, but.
Ms. Hart, we actually haven't signed a new contract. They sent us a new contract, it was updated rates for 2023, that they significantly increased their rate and did not increase their time. So I have it still sitting on my desk. We are sure we want to sign it, or if we're gonna go in the community that county has or something.
They don't.
They don't.
And, and council has wrestled with this issue for a number of years. When Don Day was manager, we tried to look at maybe doing our own thing and everything else. So we're gonna be hard pressed to find, there's a no-kill shelter in Tri-Cities that might work with us, but that's a private entity, we'd have to sign a private contract. I don't know anywhere, any other game in town except for the Humane Society.
Yeah, it's unfortunate because we're kind of over barreled on that and sort of subject to what they will give us. And then, I mean, over 2022, there were actually a couple months where we didn't even pay them because they didn't have anyone in town. And so I have someone in a private shelter locally that wants to take it over, but I'm also very frustrated that it's not working out for us, because quite honestly, it's it's hard to manage that. I called Meet York in Prosser and talked to her about their shelter and their city run business, and she said, if that goes along, we'll kill you. And she said, every animal you get usually has something wrong with them and odor. She said that it is, there is absolutely no way you can charge the public, and that's with cloud licensing for the expenses that it takes to run shelters. And nobody wants to kill shelters. So it, it, you know, we just don't have the location, we don't have the, the staff. It really would cost the city probably upwards of a hundred and fifty thousand dollars a year to run, run our animal control full-time.
Well, I would, I would like to see us come up with some sort of solutions. Again, the complaints aren't coming from only one source, they're coming from multiple places, and comments when I'm, when I'm walking around town, or I get phone calls from people that's just, I don't think, you know, most dogs aren't a risk to humans, but some are. And then they start getting in the trash, they start causing problems, they start getting disease, and then they spread that disease, and that's not good. Many of those dogs are not fixed, and so then they're having puppies, and then there's even more dogs, and it just becomes a larger and larger problem. So we've got to figure out something.
Maybe what we do is we have some public information, find resources. I know there's a lot of people that shelter animals until they can get a home. So maybe we just need to brainstorm a little bit on, on the message we can give to citizens on what to do and make sure that we're following what we need to, as staff. So we'll brainstorm on this and see if we can come up with a solution.
Good, thank you. Anything else that needs to be brought up under this item? Gone. Item C, other reports, announcements, and more questions by council. Start at the far end of the table for me and work our way this way, so Mr. Beeler.
One thing that I wanted to bring up, I wasn't here one of our meetings, and I, we're again, Zoomed in. I heard everybody on Zoom perfectly, in fact, we were talking back and forth. We couldn't hear anything from here. And when you're here, when I'm here, there's a lot of Zoom calls, like when Mayor Protip is on Zoom and we're having a meeting, we can't hear and there's a delay. We need to do something about the connection, because Zoom's working fine. Here, we're working fine, but somewhere it's not hooked up.
Yeah.
So you may have noticed that our IT person, Jefek, was here today, and he was sitting in the back during the Sunnyside meeting. His purpose was to come and visually listen in person to our meeting, and then he's gonna go home and listen to this Zoom. And so he and Mr. Martin are actually going to troubleshoot this sound system, because this is the call thread, we believe. There's, and you're right, I was on that Zoom call too, because I was home, and I could talk to you, I couldn't hear anything anyone was saying, and this room.
Couldn't hear the councilors.
We couldn't hear the, the person that got up to speak at all. So I've already passed our IT department to find a solution so that it is easier to manage them.
I was speaking directly into the microphone that night, almost swallowing it. So, yeah, it's not the microphone that's the problem, there's a, you're right. Mr. Hicks? Report, Ms. Ripley.
I went to the YVCOG dinner on December fourteenth, and it was very nice. It was, it was Christmas themed, and they were giving awards for the criminal lab. And I took my son there, you know, it's never, they're never too young to start them. And so he was my date that night, and it was nice. It was, I really liked it.
And I, I attended it via Zoom, and admit, with their, their conversations back and forth was perfect, just one thing. So I could hear everything, and, and so, so I know there's something, because the meeting, for our council meeting, there was the disconnect, you could, we could hear us who were in the Zoom booth, but the people at the seat here, we couldn't hear anything. It was like, we could only see your, the white teary eyes, and that was it. But we're glad that we're gonna, we're taking a look in here.
Just piggyback this, so Art even says, if I didn't hear a complaint about dogs, or Zoom, once a month, dogs, once a week, Zoom maybe once a month, I, I consider I had it successful month. So it's just something that has to be done, we have to look at it.
Rissucci.
Uh, thank you, Mr. Mayor. I just, YVCOG that committee will be meeting next Monday. And so, you know, with Don Lindy, our county commissioner here, and this district was selected to serve on the YVCOG exec committee with me and the other members, so he'll be working with us. He was also elected chair today of the commission.
All right, well, I don't have a great deal to report, other than the deputy mayor and I were having a conversation earlier, and we made a realization, that city manager, that we, the three of us, have not had regular meetings, and we realize that that's probably not a great thing. Like to make sure that we get that started, and for the year 2023, that we do that regularly, at least every other week, you know, we don't need to necessarily need every week, but a couple times a month would be awesome. So what I would like to ask that you do, since you probably got the more intense schedule with the rest of us, if you could come up with a date, time that works best for you, we could set up a regular standing meeting with the deputy mayor, and I can get together with you. That can involve, you know, agenda planning, but it can also involve other things that you do at that level. So that, and counsel, once again, that was a deficit on my, on my part, because I did not stay on top of that. I could claim my first year as mayor and having certain weaknesses and failures there, but I don't get to do that then this year. But we will definitely try to do that, if you would be willing to do that. One other thing is, if I remember in December, I was hoping that we could get a evaluation forms for the city manager soon. I would like to schedule a time when we can do the evaluation for the city manager. We are scheduled to do that this month, I think. Would like to get that done. I don't see that it's going to take a tremendous amount of time. We're not gonna have to schedule an entire day for it. I think it could be an evening, we have met in the past at Community Center, enjoyed pizza together, and went through that form. So I think if Mr. enters here sometime in the next couple of days, could send out a few dates, because we may have any dates that absolutely will not work for you in the month of January.
Top, I can't think of any.
Okay, so at this point, we will work together to come up with some dates and get that up to you shortly, and we'll try to get that scheduled, make sure that everybody gets a form to have that filled out prior to our meeting, and we can get that evaluation taken care of. Okay? Very good, that's all I've got. Upcoming council meetings, and city manager.
So we will have, hopefully, a presentation from Amoresco. This has been kicked down the road for months now. Amoresco has very patiently been waiting to give this presentation. We decided to, or they actually decided, to split this into two different sections. One would be just the lighting project for replacing all the lights, and the other is the HVAC portion. We really can see a huge difference when you look at them kind of side by side. The lighting project does have a payback, and it looks like it's something that we should go ahead and move forward with. The HVAC, some of the return was like, what, a hundred and fifty years?
Really, two hundred and forty-nine year one.
Yeah, so, so there's not really any payback on a lot of these HVAC upgrades. So Shane and I talked about it, and one of our goals was that we could take the problem one, because we do have a couple that are really, really problematic. And we would just go ahead and look at a five-year and a ten-year budget and get those on a capital improvement plan, and then just start moving forward and trying to get some of them fixed. One of them is, is the museum, and a lot of the ones that we have problems with is because they're on a rooftop. And so the museum refleeds because the snow gets down into that thing, cools water around it, and then now it's made roofly. So where you've had money in the budget to replace the roof, but really you need to move the HVAC and replace roofs. move the HVAC and replace roofs. So we know there's some areas in the city that we need to take care of. So that will be something that we bring forward as a, as a five and a 10-year plan for replacing HVAC. I don't think it's wise for us to do something that has a hundred and forty-nine year return on investment. But I do think it's something that we need to plan for. We will be getting the Washington Department of Ecology and Wastewater Treatment Awards that's already in Shane's office and ready to be presented.
We won't get it. We call it a break.
Okay. And sign fresh quote, have that, because that's the big one you brought forward.
All right. That was, well, so I ended originally just for the fire department and then.
And then I added some other ones. So what we really want to do is we want to have electronic reader boards at a lot of our locations. Right now, people don't know what's going on and sometimes they just need that flash of, okay, police center's having a dance in February and that, that they need to know. Or maybe there's a public service announcement that the police chief needs to do. It all started with Ken because Ken said, now that we've gotten rid of these trees and we have an opportunity to put in some conduit, I can have a really cool sign right here on the corner that tells people, come volunteer, come be, come, come to this, do this, you know, CPR classes, whatever it is that's going on in the fire department. And these will be exclusively for whatever building they're at, but they also be exclusively the city where we control the content and we're able to, you know, get the word out for things that we have going on. One other thing that we're also working on, just waiting on the contract back from the city attorney, and that is gateway signs like Granby has. Those are a little different. Those are built by a company that they, they build it for free. They charge, basically allow the city eighteen percent of this space on there. The rest of it they sell advertising for. And we not only have local businesses that can advertise, but we also get money back from the sale of those that advertise. So we don't pay for the signs. I think we might have paid some electrical, but I think that, that everything else is, is a, is a great return. So those will be, where are we doing, South Hill?
We've got, Penn now is on Agent Battery.
Okay. Right. We're trying to get this and the town kind of covered because we think that, well, we know we have people that want to grow, grow our city in that direction. So, and then we have pretty much signs in the other ones. So we didn't want to take down really good signs. We're just making sure that we get our entrances covered. And then WUI code adoption. Yeah, go ahead.
That was, that was supposed to be tonight and then I thought we, well, I thought we were going to have to have this adopted. But then when I read the code, it's. That basically they made all inclusive of this. City has adopted all state and act. Project codes by reference. So that said, I don't think we need to go. The council.
Pull that out. That'd be great. Board of Commissions member update. And purchasing and procurement policy, this is something that Jamison's been working on that was all of her efforts to do the $2.02. She asked us to move it to this meeting because it was still the bottom of her plate. And then we have an expected discussion that is property matters, so we'll be talking about that. Then I have something for the February sixth where she, where our, during our union negotiations, one of the biggest things that has been the ask is police take home vehicles. This was something that's been brought forward to council many times. We're to the point where in Yakima County, we are the only agency that does not offer a take home car. It's very hard for recruitment. We've lost some really, really good people to other agencies because it was a, it was a deal breaker for them. We have actually, the union was so kind, put together a worksheet that shows what everybody else offers. And so this council workshop will be where we bring that worksheet, you know, the worksheet forward to you and then what our recommendations will be for a take home policy and take home rules on vehicles. One of the things that's the biggest issue, we don't have enough cars to have everybody have a take. It will have to be phased in policies.
All right. Thank you very much, Masala. If you have any items that you wish to add to the agenda, please either see me or Masala. Make sure that it gets on there. Items from the department heads, that's the editor.
Mayor, first of the department heads, and I will start over here with this corner and I will let you guys work your way across without me calling them.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I have nothing really big today, so hang on.
Good evening, city council. I don't have too much for you tonight. I have the code enforcement statistics for the month. Things slowed down a little bit in the winter, like eating grass. So the numbers kind of down a little, little bit. Other than that, I don't have too.
I just have some stats like I tried to bring you every week. December first to January first, we handled 620 incidents, there was 107 traffic stops, 54 arrests, criminal non-traffic, 21 criminal traffic, and 57 traffic infractions.
I just got one of the, this morning, crews mobilized in for six week project, seven month project. There is a full closure between Ruder Avenue and Warehouse. Our staff's been out with HLA. We have not noticed as we know, business is aware, it's going to file. We will get through it, I promise, and it will be great.
This, I don't really have anything new. Can be worked, the next couple of weeks we're working on it, AFG grants. And that's open for a month, so we were going to meet with the city manager, I hope we can meet with the city manager. We also are due to our WSRV evaluation this year. Last year, they got backlog, we got backlog a little bit this year. So you'll see our crews out and maybe starting hybrid testing, starting maybe. We'll be doing hybrid testing, pre-fire. Getting on our inspection program. The department of revenue will allow me access to him. Plan that's moving forward that no, only if all we did is, all the rules will, we're kind of one of the.
Okay. So for me, I want to commend my staff for pinching for me during the month of December. I literally checked emails, I routinely answered phones, replied to a few text messages that I was pretty laid up. So stepped it up and, and made sure that our city continues with me just home in bed. And then I would like to make sure that council knows that Delilah, I resigned in December and she is now working. Congratulations to her. That was a great move. It is also putting quite a lot of strain on the finance department, especially on this morning, me being gone, you know, being holidays and then Delilah's not here. We've had to kind of pick up that load. So I actually told Jamie, hand me those bank records, I know how to do them. You know, give me the bank deposits, let me show you, you know, I trained Delilah, I knew this. So I'm helping in the finance department more than I did. I call it that I got divorced from this finance department because of when I left, I literally said, okay, I'm not, I'm, that's not my job. But you're, you're guys are the finance and I am the now city manager. So I'm going to get remarried to finance and help her out with the duties that need to be done. So just to, so you're, you're aware, if you come in and I have something spread all over my desk and you're like, whoa, what's this lady doing? So, but it, but it is also good for internal controls for me to kind of go back in with a clean set of eyes and look at the way we are doing things. Because I walked into, I'm sure many of you know, a very big mess here and did a lot of cleanup on internal controls and I just want to make sure that we don't walk backwards on that. And so I already began some audits, looking at how staff does things and just kind of getting a clean set of, clean set of eyes on it, haven't seen it for a while. Today I did the bank reconciliation, which I didn't even have river bands that were not dry and was able to river band any money because I had asked for river bands. That tells you how long it's been since I. Anyway, just for your situational awareness. And then the other thing that we talked about as a leadership group, we want to regularly plan things for council that seem to slip through the cracks. And one of them was the pitting and the swearing in of our police department and our firefighters. And it was, it's something that means a lot to them. So we want to put on your schedule quarterly and we were hoping we can do it the second month of every quarter. We want to put that in memoriam that we do it at a workshop so it can be less formal, we can invite families and just every quarter, have that on there and any employee that hasn't had it done since the last one, we do it. And you, so we have actually set this then for March 6th this year because mayor was going to be out, you know, and it does give our departments a little more time to make sure that they all have their, their nice class A or something to wear that looks good and we have badges. We will be moving that meeting to the community center, inviting the families and basically having a big shout out to our, to our. And then we also plan that night, if any new employees that haven't been introduced, we will introduce them that night. So it, it, it should be a really neat experience for all of us. And, and I think that having that on a schedule and just saying, these are the dates and then that way we don't miss this. We have, we have one officer that's been here for years that he was never.
I received an email, council received an email from Chief Lehman with a list of individuals and a date. Does that date now change to March?
It is. The mayor asked us to change it.
Okay.
I was being a little selfish and I need to apologize to everybody who didn't understand this. I am not going to be around much in the month of February, like at all. And this is an event that is really important to me. I think it's very special. I think it means a lot to the, the personnel involved. It also means a lot to me as a person to welcome them aboard and personally congratulate them either for that. So I asked the manager if she would be willing to move it from February to March because I didn't want to miss that. And I know the deputy mayor is perfectly capable of doing, would do a wonderful job. She's done it many times, but I thought this was, this was a big deal for me too. It means a lot. So that's, that's where it came about.
Explain that date change in my calendar.
Yeah, yeah. So a highlight of being mayor, swearing in police officer or firefighter. I'm sorry. I just, I truly enjoyed that.
Yeah. And I enjoy that sort of thing. I enjoy the interaction with staff and public. I, I, I find that to be a real perk in this particular job, you know, when I hear about bad things happening in town, I don't enjoy that at all, but it's, it's the exciting stuff, you know, I want to, I want to take advantage of that too. So, yeah, there was some, oh yes. I want to formally welcome you, Chief Lehman, as our full-time permanent city chief. I know that, you know, you've been serving in that capacity for several months now and you've done an excellent job. And so when I got the notification from Masala that you've been appointed to that job permanently, I was very pleased. So welcome aboard. I know I spoke to you one-on-one, but officially at a council meeting, I just want to welcome you aboard and say thank you for your willingness to serve in that capacity.
Thank you.
I wish you the best of success. I really do.
And I have one last thing that I would like to say. Job that he has to do is not easy. The job that he has to do in the future will take some time to get everybody whole. Did have an officer stop by today and tell me the entire atmosphere at the police department. And it's a pleasure to. I think that Rob has heard that, or Chief Lehman has heard that from several other officers and I commend him on his work in just a short period of time to get us to a place where people want to be here.
City manager. Mr. Beeler, Delilah's a replacement. How are we doing that?
So we've actually made a decision not to fill her role exactly right this minute. We want to evaluate the position, figure out if that position is truly what is fitting the needs of the financial department, especially since, you know, I involved, I was the one that did the job for many years and then Delilah did the job. Jamison hasn't really ever been in that position in this city. So she needs to get up to speak so that basically she can train the person that comes in. And I think that there are some things that we were, that we're doing that are maybe redundant. And so we want to really make sure that that job is doing the things that they should be as a finance supervisor. And we're also evaluating if finance supervisor is what really that role was because it is, it's so dynamic with the amount of work that was done. So we're going to take a pause and do a review for at least two months and then see where we go with that. And it, and it does need a little more work on Jamison and myself, but we feel like that's important and if Jamison wants to.
I was just going to say, that's probably why I can't think of anything to say. Thanks, thanks, the city manager for all the help. She's been great. But I am sort of regretting that we decided to do that just because it's crazy, but Delilah had very, very good shoes and as the city manager said, very dynamic and her position touched every department of the city in one way or another. And so there may be a better classification for it and that's really what we're, we're trying to get right.
That, that position evolved from when I started here, I was a financial analyst. And then it turned into, I don't remember what my title was, Atad something. And then, then when I became the finance director, then it morphed into something else and then it morphed into accounting or finance supervisor. So it, it's had all kinds of different titles since I've been here eight years. So that's why I thought it would be a really good time to kind of have Jamison and I kind of brainstorm, look at the work of and see where, where we can take it, I guess. Because it is a very specialized position and it is kind of just be the way we, we do it. So I want to make sure that we untangle it and make sure it's exactly what works for the finance.
Why, that was such a loaded question.
You know, you don't realize how, how much work we do. I mean, I'd be very much appreciative, Delilah, would you be here? Absolutely. And I hope she knows that, but she has, she had been here for seventeen years and she really has such a strong handle on so many aspects of city business. It's just one of those people that was so fundamental to the heart of basic operations that it's going to be really hard to find somebody to do that.
And I think that the other strong suit that Delilah had is she started out in public work as Shane's assistant before Shane was in public work. And then worked as the city clerk, was the city clerk for.
Deputy city clerk under, under Denver.
Yeah. And then, and then city clerk. And then made the, the jump to finance. And so she, you could ask her a question and she has institutional knowledge that, you know, goes back those seventeen years through the different positions. And so it was, it, it is going to be something that we really have to take a look at because, like I said, I think there's things that she did that maybe were things she just kind of had always done. done, and, and, and we may not have known it. She just did it because it was something to do.
Because she had those different positions, I think there were little things that she held on to, from those positions that sort of have built up. Um, I don't know if you'll recall, last year, we gave, um, several presentations about, um, salaries and keeping salaries and keeping job classifications accurate, because when you go to try to replace somebody, you want to make sure that you have the budget and the job description right to do that. This is one of those examples where you have this excellent, amazing employee, but you're not going to find another person that can do all of those things, you know, for the city. It is a, a complex issue.
Yeah.
All that being said, however, I encourage you to define the position as best you can to get somebody in there as quickly as possible. But I'd really like you to continue to focus on being city manager.
Yeah.
And, uh, and do that job well.
I, I'll tell you, I, I am able to focus, I just, you know, like I said, my desk is spread, this is, this is paper right now. Um, and I just want to do my city manager stuff, and when I have a little break, I do. I'm gonna be done as fast as what Delilah's looking back to, sure.
All right. You're started.
I have one more question. Um, just something when we were, earlier, and I should have brought it up during the status report, but maybe it doesn't really sit there. But I noticed that we're getting the reports on the, um, the different, um, the things that the code enforcement, and, and then, uh, the chief here just did a little report about the, um, different crimes since the last time, you know, stops and so forth, and what those were. I was just thinking, at some point, if we could maybe have also kind of a running tally of like building permits. I know that we keep those, and it might be a good thing to, every now and then, just let us know, because we always think the bill, that, that the, the city isn't growing, or maybe it is growing, or the building permits can help us kind of keep a, a more accurate gauge of that, and that might be something Trevor's.
Yeah, absolutely. Um, just to quickly throw you in on that situation, um, we're, we're doing some, some software changes right now, and the software changes, we'll be able to run a little bit more complex, we'll be able to do trends, we'll be able to see permits over time, and we'll be able to do the same thing with code. Um, so I'm hoping that by midsummer, I'll be able to hand some of that to you, and you can kind of pull those together, and, um, how we're, we're looking. How, um...
Okay. This is kind of interesting to know, because right across the street from where I live now, on Friends and Court, with the mud holes where the new meters are surely gonna come pretty soon, there's a brand new, I think it's a duplex that's going in there, just across the street on Friends and, Friends and Court. But, um, but where else are those are buildings going, you know, because we see them from time to time, so.
We do have the data, it's just, it's not super clean at this point in time.
Yeah. Yeah. I used to have to read those once in a while, to figure that out.
Well, you can, I can get it for you for the next, I'll show you what we did this last year.
Maybe that's a good thing to have.
Yeah, I can, I can compare that thing, that...
Sure. I think that'd be a good thing to have. Thank you.
And we actually have had a lot, a lot of growth, and we have a lot of pending, um, helping, so there, there's, we do have a lot of potential, too.
Good to see that.
Or kind of going, what's the next... Lot of interest. I have covers every day with people.
This was something, this, because of the big hole across the street, I thought, I don't know, how many of those are going to, uh... Thank you.
I agree. I'd be interested in having that. As well, people do ask. I, I work a lot in Yakima, I talk to a lot of people, and they're asking how funding side is going, how it's growing, and where it's growing, and they, they... But, uh, not nearly what they're looking for. Further comments or questions for this evening? All right. If you, no other business to come before this council, and if there's no objection, please leave the church at seven forty PM. Thank you, everybody, and have a good evening.
We're all here for...